Okay, Travis says we're ready to go for Spanish Fork City Council meeting Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. Thank you, everybody, for joining us in council chambers. Bronco, you're looking good. Hi. I have to apologize for everybody's dress up here, except for Shane. Shane always dresses like this, but we were at a shovel turning this morning and just kept it rolling all day long, per-
Why go home and change?
Councilwoman Beck, yep. So, we're here.
I see no problem with this.
No, Shane likes it. He's trying to-
Nice job, city council members.
We'll get started like we always do in Spanish Fork with a pledge and a prayer. Who has the motivational thought and prayer? Councilman Euler. And then, leading us in the pledge is Councilman Carden. Councilman Euler.
Thank you, Mayor. I've invited a good friend, Becky Nepper, to come and give our motivational thought and prayer. So Becky, the time is yours.
Thanks for inviting me, Kevin. So my thought is that when I was the commander of the American Legion, I really wanted to thank Chad Argyle for his support and service. But on his last meeting, I was not the commander. So Chad, thank you so much for all you did for our veterans, for our community. And we couldn't have had a better guy. And that's it.
Thank you, thank you.
Our kind and gracious heavenly father, we thank thee for all the many blessings that thou has given us. We thank thee for the fine people that have the care and wishes of our city and citizens and are taking such good care to make Spanish Fork such a wonderful place to live. We ask at this time that you bless them, that they continue to make good choices for our city. We also ask thee to watch over our first responders that take such good care and make it a safe place to live, and also our veterans. We say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Becky. Will the audience please arise and say the pledge allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Becky, I am positive that Councilman Argyle was watching too. So he always lets us know that he's watching. So thank you for calling him out there. Okay, we'll get to our first item of business in the call to order section is always an exciting time to do the oath of office. Mr. Chief?
Yes, good evening. It's a privilege for me to introduce our newest member of our police department this evening, Officer John Green. He's here this evening with his wife, Beth. John graduated the police academy two weeks ago. Had the opportunity to attend that graduation. His family was there. His parents were there. He has a great support system. He has a son that serves as a deputy for the sheriff's office. And in my interview with John, when we were conducting our job interview, I was looking at John and I thought he might not be the youngest officer that's applied with this. So I said, John, what motivates you to want to be a police officer later in life? And I was really humbled and taken back by his response was, I want to serve my fellow citizens. I want to serve the community. I want to give back. I've had a great career in the construction industry and real estate appraising. And there's a higher calling that I want to do. And so I was really impressed by his comments and his remarks. And we're excited for John to come onboard with us. He's been in the FTO process for two weeks. It's busy out there. We were talking about the traffic accidents that he's been responding to today. And it's just a busy community. But he's going to be a great asset to the police department. And we're excited to have him here with us. So, welcome.
Thank you, Chief.
Nothing?
Nothing, John?
Well, with that being said, then, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn the time over to you to administer the oath of office.
Ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I-
I.
State your name.
John Green.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will, to the best of my ability-
That I will, to the best of my ability-
And with the highest level of integrity-
And the highest level of integrity-
Serve the people of Spanish Fork City-
Serve the people of Spanish Fork City-
And preserve, protect-
Preserve, protect-
And defend-
And defend-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the state of Utah.
And the Constitution of the state of Utah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You can do right here.
Should we get Beth in there, too?
Congratulations.
Can we really let him get away without saying anything?
Yes.
We can invite Mrs. Green up. She could take the mic for a minute. Anything you want to say?
That backfired, I'm sorry.
I'm just really proud of him. That's really about it, honestly.
Let the record stay, Travis. She said she's proud of him. You got that? Welcome. We're excited. How many officers? Chief, I always ask you this. It's somewhere in the fort.
Forty-three, and we have another one graduate in November.
Very good.
Exciting. Wow.
Very good. Thank you, John. Welcome to the force. Okay, that takes us to the recognitions portion. We have, we do have a employee of the quarter tonight that we're going to recognize.
Yeah, let's invite, so Bart Morrell, do you want to come up and present the employee of the second quarter?
This is Chase's favorite thing ever.
I'll bet. I can tell Chase is loving this.
I wrote down a few thoughts, and I'm going to read them so I don't mess them up too much. But Chase James is a maintenance supervisor in the Parks Division. He oversees the maintenance over 150 acres of parks, streetscapes, and detention basins throughout the city, as well as the reservoir, campground, and gun club. The mountain bike trails also. He's responsible for the downtown core area, which includes the city offices, library hall, and city park. He also oversees the maintenance of the trees, the planters along Main Street, and all of the city-owned buildings. Chase supervises six full-time employees and has stewardship over dozens of seasonal employees. Chase has many years of experience, he has a great understanding of best maintenance practices, and applies those throughout the parks. He is also, he is always willing to share his knowledge with his coworkers and anyone that asks. Some of Chase's credentials include pesticide application license, certified arborist, and certified playground safety inspector. These certifications require many hours of experience, study, and you have to pass a very difficult exam. Chase has many attributes that make him a great leader. He listens well to his employees, as well as his supervisors. He is slow to anger. He is patient. He is quick to respond to requests, especially those involving safety concerns. He tries to gather all of the information or facts before making a decision. One of his best qualities is he leads by example. I'd like to thank Chase for all of his hard work and dedication to his job. I know he often feels like he's on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I'd also like to thank his family because there are times when he's called out on weekends and on holidays for just various reasons. I'd like to conclude by sharing some of the words of the person who nominated Chase for employee of the quarter, since they can write much more eloquently than I can. Chase James is a phenomenal asset to the city. He does so much work, and in my opinion, goes above and beyond to do a good job. Yet, he does it silently and will never ask or seek recognition for his hard work. I've been fortunate enough to work with him on various risk management projects, to see his efforts in the background, to know how much value Chase adds to our Parks Department. Chase is humble and will likely give all the credit to his team for getting the work done. But his leadership, an example that really, it is his leadership, an example that really sets the course for the employees he supervises. All of them have great attributes, good work ethic, and I give a lot of credit to Chase for creating that culture. Again, he's working hard silently in the background. I'm glad to have worked with him because I know he is doing great things and will continue to do great things for the city. I'd like to congratulate Chase. He's very well-deserving of employee of the quarter.
Chase, you want to say anything? We ask your spouse next, so-
Yeah, well, she would be much better than I am. No, I'm just grateful and thankful for the recognition, the award. I'm surrounded by a great group of people that make my job easier. So I love working here. I love Spanish Fork. So, been here my whole life. So, it's fun to make the parks look as good as they do. So, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Chase.
While Chase is up here, I'll say something that, an event that Councilwoman Beck's going to cover. But some contractors were in the city today, and they hadn't been here for quite some time. They couldn't believe how big our city was now, as far as a footprint. But they did take notice, and these are people that you probably should be proud of taking notice. They noticed how well-manicured everything was when they drove through the city and hadn't been here for a long time. So, that's a testament to you and your crew. And thanks. Thanks for making it feel that way to people who visit.
Thanks, Chase.
Manager.
I was just going to say, Chase, I think your first assignment as a lead worker was the All Abilities Park. Is that right? And so he started, he managed that park from the time we took it over and maintained it. And he created, I think, a great system and a great, great pattern for how that park is maintained and how it operates. And it probably is, you'd know better than me, but it probably is one of the most unique parks, not just in our city, but perhaps in our county, in how it gets used. And that park is not easy to maintain. And the people that are there want it to be exactly how they want it to be, because it's so cool when it is how they want it to be. And so Chase cut his teeth as a lead worker on that park and set us up for such a great, a great location. And when he was promoted to this position that he has, of course, he was replaced there. I imagine that your heart still is there sometimes. And other days, you're like, no thanks. You go ahead and have that one. You deal with this. But I've been, I've been one of those that calls Chase on a Saturday. I think I called him a couple Saturdays ago. And he was great to receive, receive those phone calls. Ally, is that right? Ally, yeah. She looked up. Thank you for letting us be annoying sometimes. We apologize. But you've got a great, a great husband. We recognize his commitment. So, thank you.
And Chase, if we could get a photo with you and your family, if they'd like, in front of the council? And Bart, why not?
If we had to have Bart.
We may as well invite Bronco. Well, he's here, too.
We don't want to picture that.
All dressed up.
Oh, come on, Bronco.
He just missed his suit coat.
Come on up, Lakeley. Be brave.
He's not used to dressing like that.
I don't like it. I'll never do it again.
Chase, she was going for some M&amp;M's.
After you smile big, you can get some M&amp;M's from the mayor.
Rejected.
Are you guys ready?
That was awesome.
She's got soccer to go to. Let's go.
Give her some sugar.
I don't like that.
Very good. Thank you to the James family for being here. You made our, you made our meeting good. Appreciate it. Okay, it takes us to council, excuse me, public comments section tonight. Anybody from the public that would like to address the mayor and council, please come up. Doesn't have to be an item on the agenda, but please come up and address us. If there's anything you'd like to discuss with the mayor and council tonight, and Jack will keep us on time. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to council comments. I think we'll start at that end. Councilman Took, if that's all right, and work our way this way.
You bet. Thank you, Mayor. All right. So we have with us tonight our Chamber of Commerce President, Kathleen Levitt. Kathleen, would you like to take a couple minutes? Go ahead.
I appreciate the time, councilman. Just a few upcoming events at the Chamber of Commerce. We have our Women in Business event tomorrow at 12:30. That's sponsored by Protection Self-Storage. On September 3rd, that's 1486 Del Monte Road, here in Spanish Fork. They're, they're bringing in an organization instructor to teach us how to store everything better, as well as bond and network with other women in business. So, that will be really fun. Business after hours is September 4th, on Thursday this week, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. That's hosted by Rasmusson Jewelers in their new location, which is the old Hu Hut, the old Hu Hut building. But they've completely renovated that and turned it into a glamorous jewelry store. So that will be a really fun one to review all of their upgrades. That's 693 North, 920 East, just right next door to Vasa. And in lieu of new networking this month is our business summit on September 25th. So please mark that date in your calendars. We're partnering with the Pace and Santaquin Chamber, as well as Springville-Mapleton Chamber on this project. So we're hosting at the Springville Library, 45 South Main Street in Springville. The event is sponsored by Intermountain Health and Hedro. We have Intermountain Health Market President coming in to address us, which will be really exciting. And then we've also secured Brandon Fugel back by popular demand to be one of the keynotes. So that'll be a great day on September 25th. And that's all I've got going on this month. Thanks, Landon.
Thank you, Kathleen. All right. I'd like to thank the mayor and council, minus Councilman Marshall and myself, this last Wednesday, for taking care of the canvassing here. We weren't able to make it, but thank you for the primary election. So it was good to see that get taken care of.
I thought you were just going to single out, single me out.
Myself included.
I'm glad. Thank everyone but you.
Both of us. But still got to the finish line.
Thank you.
Also, I brought a couple pictures for this next one here. There was this past week, a new business that came to town. And here's the first picture of some of us here. This is Aubergine Kitchen. They had their grand opening, ribbon cutting as well. And it was just a lot of fun. The food's delicious. I think all of those who ate there would attest to that. It was a really good time and definitely worth checking out. It's a fun new ad. It's just right there north in that same business complex is Target, just north, right there by the new Wingstop, I think it is. And yeah, just excited to have them here. Thank them for coming to town. And thank you, Jack, for those pictures. Also, just a couple more things here. So, we have coming up for the city of Spanish Fork, the 9/11 Day of Service. This is going to be a really exciting event, including all of the Latter Day Saints stakes in the city. And so Jack put this excellent flyer together. So just to kind of look at it, I'll talk through a couple of things quickly. And Jack, honestly, if you'd like to add anything, please, please go ahead. But we, we're advertising it on the city level as well, because it's, most of what the LDS Stakes will be doing for this project on 9/13, on that Saturday, will be, there are things that are on the Just Serve website, but they're, they're helping, of course, Spanish Fork City and beautifying trails and such. And I know Bart was just here a minute ago, but I've worked with him quite a bit getting this project set up as well. And so it's been a lot of fun. But you can see a couple samples of projects on that day. There's a variety more if you were to go to their website. And if you've not visited the Just Serve website, it's pretty fun. Go there, and if you just search for the 9/13, that date, you can see all the projects listed. But we need volunteers, though. And so, so the LDS Stakes will be, of course, broadcasting, they already are, to their, to their wards, to get volunteers. But please spread the word as well, if you could, please. We'll be beginning here in two days. Jack will be helping us with some advertising on social media for it as well. It was just recently put in the newsletter for this month as well. And if you have any questions about the 9/11 Day of Service, please reach out to Jack or myself. Jack, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
No, I just agree. You go to JustServe.org. You can search projects by Spanish Fork, and it'll give you all kinds of local projects. But what's really cool is you can see on a lot of them, if they're city projects that the city has work to put on, that'll help benefit the community. So, that's great, Landon. Thanks.
Thank you, Jack. Yeah, amazing projects. This day will be incredible. All the service that'll be completed and, and the value added to our community. I'm so excited. So, please get involved, spread the word on the 9/11 Day of Service. Next, also on the Just Serve website, and I'm going to pull up one thing here real quick. There it is. You can also find, and I won't show you for sake of time, but there's the Brent, we mentioned this, I think, a couple weeks ago, but there's the Brent Taylor Memorial that'll be at the Fairgrounds on September 9th through the 13th. And so if you'd like to volunteer to help with that, or just go, again, it'll be on the 9th through the 13th of this month. But on the Just Serve website, you can find, under the Brent Taylor Foundation, you can sign up for that. And again, if you have any questions, please, please reach out to get involved with that. And I think that's all I've got. Mayor?
Perfect. Thank you, Councilman Took. Councilman Carden?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The first thing that I have is this Friday, so we have changed the day of the week that this event is on. It's on Friday night with the food trucks. Our Harvest Moon Hurrah will be just over at the park, just across the street, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. We have a few musical numbers that'll be going. The Corral, Lunch at Lou's, and Whitney Lusk will be there. Some games, some different vendors will be there, food vendors. It'll be a good event. We're trying it out on a Friday night, just because we already have the food trucks going on during that time. So we thought we would a little bit double dip and see how that goes with the new night. So there may be some questions about that. But yeah, new night, Friday night, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., just across the street here. So, lots of activities there. You'll see the U City Council there helping and doing a lot of different things with that. So thanks for pulling that up, Jack. Other thing that I just wanted to take a couple of seconds to thank, again, our public service. I think we do this every council meeting at this point, but we, in the last couple of weeks, we've had a couple fires that could have been catastrophic, literally could have been really fastly spread. But because of our full-time fire department, along with other agencies up on the hill in Mapleton, right at, they seem to happen at the wrong time, it seems like, right before the wind is going to start. So that's always a little bit scary. But the one in Mapleton was put out within, I would say, 24 hours. I don't know exactly the timeframe. But then there was another one last night, and I think it ate up 24 acres, is what I saw, the last count, something like that. But that's a lot of acreage that could potentially have become really, really big quickly. So thank you to the, the quick response of our emergency service. And I know that there's lots of different things, our police department, our fire, and EMS are on all the time that go unnoted. But fires seem to, to be big, and so we noticed those. But thank you for what you do every day, putting yourselves in danger's line to help us out. So thank you. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilman Carden. Appreciate that. Councilman Euler?
I don't have anything tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilwoman Beck?
So Seth, you brought up the All Abilities Park. And we were camping this weekend, and I put on an old t-shirt, and it was the All Abilities Park t-shirt. And it reminded me that our ribbon cutting was five years ago this week. Is that correct? It was September 2020, right? Is that crazy? Like, it seems like it just opened. And that park has been such a huge asset to our community. I drive by it nearly every day when I'm out and about. And through the summer, especially, it is just jam-packed with kids and lots of fun. So, kudos to all of the Parks and Rec employees that are there all day, keeping their eyes on some of the hooligans. Not too many, but there are some occasional hooligans there. But lots of happy kids and parties, and it's just a fun place. And Mayor mentioned this morning that at 9:00 a.m., we were all invited to go to a groundbreaking ceremony at the American Leadership Academy. They are going to start constructing a new field house. It's going to be called the Eagle Field House. So it was fun to go support them and, and be invited to something as big as, as big as that that's happening there. They are celebrating their 20th anniversary right now as well, which, that doesn't seem very long ago that they opened. So, another big, a big thing happening in one of our schools here in the community. And we're glad to go and support them. And that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Councilwoman Beck. Councilman Marshall?
I don't have anything either.
Two passes?
Two passes.
Yeah.
Loudmouths.
All right.
Kevin, should you at least tell everyone to spay and neuter their cat?
I should tell everyone to do that, but you just did.
It's got that covered today. Piggyback on, on Councilwoman Beck, appreciate ALA inviting us down there today. It, it was a good, good place to celebrate their expansion. It's not lost on me where we stand when we go down to ALA. And, and it kind of got me in the geographical location of, of just our community on that side. And it's in Leland, which is a, is a, an old farming community that, very proud of their roots and everything else. But, but we stand in between IFA Country Store, where, you know, people go and get their, get their fertilizer and their feed and everything in, in the farming community of South Utah County, and then Leland Mill as well. So in the background of this high school, that is going to have a beautiful new building and, and grow children, it's next to some big silos where people bring, still bring their grain and things like that. So it was just a, a cool moment to, to again, see an expansion of, of a, of a good school down there. And, and next to some pretty historic sites still in our, our city as well. So both are alive and well in our community, the farming community, and the education community are both alive and well. So it was an honor to be down there. Really quickly, brought up with, with the All Abilities Park, five years ago. And she's in a lot of those clips of that ribbon cutting was, was Carol Ford and Carol's Day of Caring that was marked last week. And I can't tell you how much that meant to me personally, but I know to the Ford family and to our community, that people took that to heart and just did a caring thing that day. And I know some of us posted what we did, and a lot of us just didn't. And, but you could feel it was, it was marked a special day of, of her passing, her legacy that she left here in the community. So thank, thank you to everybody that went out of their way and did something nice for somebody that day. It was, it was a cool thing to have Carol's Day of Caring come around. Last is, we had a UNPA board meeting last week that, that was held over at the Provo Recreation Center. Mayor Cafusi there hosted us, who the UNPA board is made up of mayors, myself and Mayor Cafusi, and then Mayor of Salem, the Mayor of Mantai, the Mayor of Nephi, and the Mayor of Levan, along with technical committee members who actually know what these things mean. But, but it was, once again, just an honor to sit in that meeting and, and hear about the details of, I know we don't think about it every day. And, and we should be grateful for that when we flip on the light, or your AC unit is working, when it's been 100 degrees forever this summer. And, and we don't, we don't put a lot of thought into it. But, but Corey and his division and Jake Tire have to always think about it, and where, where our power comes from, reliable sources that we share through UNPA. Believe it or not, it's been a tough summer for our city organizations that belong to UNPA, where you get your power from. Some of those power plants have been offline since July. And in case you didn't notice, it was pretty hot. We were using a lot of power in, in July and August. And, and one of, one of those power plants being completely down, a couple of them being offline for some, some time. The amazing thing is that organization nimble enough, well-managed enough, that they were actually able to, to get power from other sources, navigate that tough condition, and then come out with actually a record month of net profit in the organization. So it's a world of buying and selling power from, from different places. But what I, what I can assure you, without going into, again, too many of the technical details that I wouldn't know anyway, is your power is reliable in Spanish Fork. It's a lot of years of investment that go into that. But even in the tough times, we, we shine through as, as, as a good organization that can, can be nimble and make those changes. So, continue to, to use your AC and turn on your lights and everything else that takes power, and not have to think too much about it, because the organization that we're a part of is, is thinking about it day and night. So, pretty, pretty good board meeting to have there last week. That's all I have for council comments. Are you guys sure that didn't spurn any talking that you wanted to do?
Definitely not.
Okay. Staff reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we've got just a couple of items, three to talk about. First, we'll have Tara talk about primary election results. And then Bronco will share an update about something the rec department did, the Fit City Center Hiring Party. And then Corey Christians, or Corey Pierce will give us a water reclamation facility update.
Great, thank you. We just had our canvas on the 26th. Landon mentioned that, the end of the primary election. We just-
We just wanted to make sure that we got this information out. It's on our website, it's on the county's website as well, and you can find it on Spanish Fork under Elections. But we just wanted to let you know that the candidates moving on for the general election are Scott Nilson and Mike Minden Hall. And then we also have for the four, the two seats as a city council member, we have Brian Edmund, Shane Marshall, Valerie Mills, and Kevin Euler. So those are the ones that will be moving on to the general election, and just remember that the general election is November 4th. So, thank you.
Questions for Tara?
Good job, Tara.
Thank you, Tara.
Thank you, Tara.
Who's next?
So as you all know, we're ramping up to open up a big facility to south end of town, and last Monday, August 25th, we decided to put on a, a job fair. Now, I've been a, a part of a few job fairs, I've never put one on since working for the city, but usually they come with unsuccessful, especially for a part-time, looking for part-time positions. So we didn't really know what to expect, so we, we went big, and we set up in the Ponderosa. We had a, the first crew would be screening guests, they came through, we found out their interests, then we would send them to various divisions within the Fit City Center, primarily focused on child watch, aquatics, front desk, and programming. We didn't really focus on fitness, because we've been having auditions and, and working on that for the last month. And we opened up the gates and, and we had 181 people show up.
Oh, wow.
Between one and seven, and you're probably wondering, like, there's nobody there in that picture. We took a picture when we started, and we were very, it was very busy. So we didn't take another picture. So don't let that picture fool you. We had 181 people show up, and especially that picture. And we're glad we were in the Ponderosa. But the, the big thing there is, it wasn't only the quantity, but the quality of applicants that want to be a part of this facility was, was awesome. We were overwhelmed and, and left, left that fair feeling really good about where we're at as we ramp up to open up. We're looking to hire out the gate about 225 part-time employees between all the divisions, and we were very impressed and are beginning that hiring process, and we'll probably do more of these based on the success we had on the first one. And really, the credit goes to Nick Porter and his staff. They organized it very well around the event, and we were very thrilled with how it went.
That was a great idea.
Very good.
Bronco, I was able to go down to this event and take my daughters and let them interview and learn about the opportunities for part-time work, and it was really impressive. Just like you said, it, well organized though, very well orchestrated, the booths, the interview stations, everyone was dressed well, who, you know, was running it and just taking it serious, and everybody else, you know, in response did the same thing, and you had some fun stickers to hand out and things, and I hope you guys do more of these. It was, it was impressive. It made me proud.
Thank you.
Fitness instructor auditions, I didn't get a call.
I think everybody saw your picture, and they just are worried about, you know, performance enhancements that you've taken.
Maybe the yoga instructor.
Yeah.
You haven't seen me stretch yet.
Landon sat up there, so we did interview Landon. He hasn't had a call back yet, but we're working on that. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, Mr. Pierce?
Yes, thank you. Jack has a few pictures to share. We're, it's an exciting time down at the water reclamation facility, as you all know. First, some lessons learned. I think, I think some of you have seen this picture, but as you start up a, a plant like this, there is so many different pieces of equipment and controls talking to each other, and this is a simple problem of two pieces of equipment not talking well. The screens that are on the upper floors said, "We're running, we're ready for flow," when in reality they weren't. And so the, the main plant's gate had turned on the pumps, and this represents about 15 minutes till someone said, "Whoa, turn it off." And at that flow, it's just shy of 50,000 gallons in that 15 minutes. So as you can imagine, now pay attention to the color, this is screened raw effluent, or effluent. We'll see a, a video here in a minute, but this was a, a Saturday morning. Every day for the last three weeks, they've been going through a process to drain off some excess water and then fill some new sewer into the plant to feed our biology and keep them growing. And we've been tracking that and, and just trying to get to a point to where we can fully treat. Go ahead and keep.
We threw that bottle of Powerade away, right? We just.
Yeah, I hope so. I hope so. Now, I will say, I, I sent these to, to Seth with no explanation, just said, "This is what a bad day down there looks like." And he's like, "Whoa, what?" You know? We went down, was it later that day?
Tuesday, yeah.
We, we went down Tuesday. So this happened Saturday. Fortunately, the bulk of it was contained within the building. We weren't out sweeping driveways or mopping driveways, if you will. And I didn't know what to expect, Seth didn't, and we walked in and it smelt clean. And at the time, we were running wastewater into the plant, and he says, "Whoa, this is the room we had pictures of?" And, and it was. It cleaned up well, and, and thanks to our contractors and those, those on site. So Jack, if you can go to the next slide, one of the things we've been tracking is total suspended solids. It's really an indicator of how much biology, how much growth we have. And the goal was to hit 3,000 milligrams per liter before we could turn full-time sewage in. And so today, we are 3,200. So the plan is tomorrow, all the flow out of 200 East, 24/7 is going to be turned into the treatment plant. This is a, a big deal. I instantly asked, "Who's on call and are they ready for this?" The contractor will be on, onsite as well, as well as our MemCor, who's the company that we bought the filters from, they'll have personnel onsite. This will be the first time that we're discharging treated effluent from the new treatment plant. So they'll be there, ready to help us tackle any other surprises. We think we've worked through them all, but we thought we had before a week ago Saturday as well.
Corey, do we own this yet, or do we, have we taken full possession of it from the contractor?
We have not. The contractor has reached substantial completion, which means we can run wastewater through the plant and everything functions. The project itself, they're working on the frontage improvements, the roadway, and internal landscaping rock type items. So contractor's still onsite, running this. All the equipment vendors are heavily involved, our engineers are there, as well as our staff that are learning how to run this in the meantime, so we can take the handover. It'll be later in the year before, probably closer to December, when everything's crossed off and the contractor will drive away from the site. So there, there's still a lot of people involved and a lot of help here.
We started testing, how many weeks ago? Because this is all during the testing phase, right? So we started testing.
This line here is running sewage in and growing the biology for three weeks. The model said we could do it. We were a little skeptical, but we have. Before that, there was probably a two-month period where we were running clean water through at different stages, testing equipment, sensors, making sure it was all talking and working, but there's, there's always things we couldn't test or find out the hard way as well, so.
One of the concerns, and maybe this is where Councilman Marshall was thinking, like, that, those previous pictures to me are not a good thing. Like, we don't want to show or have those pictures ever. But sometimes we've got to be in the test phase before we can find that this computer in essence is speaking Japanese and this computer is speaking Spanish, and that's, that's essentially what they were doing, and, and we weren't able to know that, the contractor wasn't. So the contractor's working through these issues, really them on the front line, us in the background. We're watching and learning, and, and everything's actually going ahead of schedule, right? This is a week or so before they thought, or did you say a month before?
Best-case scenario was three weeks, which is what we've had, and we thought it could be double that. So the, the good news of even the lessons learned pictures there is, it was at a stage where we could walk in, push a button, and shut it down. Quite frankly, tomorrow, that's going to be less of an option. So the contractor's geared up with pumps and things to correct it if needed, but yes.
Well, they cleaned that up.
They cleaned it up, and the vendor, some of the motor here on some of the equipment that got wet is a little questionable, so the vendor's sending out a new motor, and things are going to be well taken care of.
I have had COVID, therefore my smeller isn't as good, I think, as it used to be, but from Saturday to Tuesday, I could not smell anything in that space. It was unbelievable.
Yeah. In fact, we walked in, I said, "I don't know if they're running sewage in right now," and then I could hear the pumps, and "No, they are." And, and the odor control seemed to really work well.
Yeah, we went and opened everything. It was working.
Yeah.
We got into the smelly places.
You lifted the cover off, and it was clear that.
Like they should.
Working. Sorry, Seth, I keep cutting you off. So maybe one more video. Today, they actually pulled water through the, the MemCor system. This doesn't mean a lot to people, but when I see green on some of the pumps, I get excited because they're operating. And this is the filtration system, so that's exciting. And then there's just a quick video. Remember the picture of that raw wastewater color? This is what went out the door today at the treatment plant. Same water being treated, filtered, and I expect that looks cleaner than Dry Creek that, well, I know it looks cleaner than Dry Creek that it's discharging into, so.
That's impressive.
And, and certainly, if we had a comparison video of the existing treatment, boy, just to see what this treatment plant can do with the filtration is.
Is that behind glass? Is that vertical that we're looking at?
Sorry, that's tipped sideways, so the, the water is falling over those corrugated weirs. Down, down is into the screen, if you will. So the water is flowing kind of left to right and then dropping down through this area. So that's, that's treated, filtered, and disinfected.
Ready to drink.
Yep, and tomorrow, that'll be turned on and 24/7 running with small amount of flow. About a week from now, we'll start adding some flow from the main street, and a week after that, the hope is to turn it all, so.
Corey, do you know what our capacity will be once the, that's up and running tomorrow as far as what the plant could do and, and compared to what we will be, Mapleton and us, using?
Yeah. So today, the treatment plant, and it depends when, after rainstorm, it's going to run higher. We're running around four and a half to five million gallons a day. The treatment plant average annual, so if you take the flow during a full year, divide it by 365, is designed for about 6.65 million gallons. And it doesn't sound like that much growth, but picture all of Spanish Fork, all of Mapleton, that's four and a half million gallons. So adding a little over 2 million gallons, that's a lot of growth. Represents about 20 years of planning growth. I guess we'll see how quick we grow versus our estimates or if we're slower. One of the pluses is particularly the headworks and the disinfection are sized for about 12 million gallons a day, so for build-out type conditions, with adding some equipment, which is pretty simple. The treatment train that really does the work down the middle, you know, at some point, 20 years out or so, we'll have to build another set of that to have enough capacity, so that, that's kind of the plan. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
Jack didn't put a picture of me smiling, but I, if you can picture that.
You were.
We can see it.
You were.
That's how I feel. There you go.
Very cool stuff. Very cool technology. Appreciate that. Manager Parents, is that all the staff reports?
Yep.
He's dying to make.
There's more I want to talk about. This is so cool, but no, we're good.
No puns.
That's enough, that's enough for now.
Takes us to item seven, the library report.
Now, this is fun stuff.
This is fun.
The, the topics that we've just jumped from, it's just astounding.
Yeah, I'm glad I'm on this board.
Trying to think of some good jokes that tie in with Corey's presentation. Nothing's coming up.
Please don't. We've heard them all.
Corey and Seth have probably said them all.
It's not Corey and Seth, it's Vaughn and Tyler.
Oh, everybody.
And Corey.
All of us.
Jack.
We all. We'll talk a little bit about donations a little bit. We take a, a different type of donation at the library, I guess, maybe that I had.
Nope.
Presentation, but Seth asked if I'd come this evening and just talk a little bit about some of the updates, things we have going on at the library. And last week, I presented for Spanish Fork University, and I love presenting this slide to our attendees, because it really sums up kind of the history of the library and the impact that library hall has had. You all have seen this slide, so this is for the millions of viewers at home. But this is the total number of checkouts through our library over the last, what, 22 years, back to 2003. And you can see kind of in the 2010s, right, this kind of plateau in terms of circulation at the library, despite significant growth within our community, population growth. 2020 is our asterisk year of COVID, where we kind of bottomed out, but then ever since then, just this significant increase in usage at the library. And it's not just checkouts. I could run the same report showing program participation, visits, you name it, and everything is up. And it's, it's an exciting time to be at the library, even though we've been here now two and a half years, it feels like just yesterday that we moved in. But just such an awesome impact that we have on the community through our various programs, access to information, and providing spaces for teens and adults and children to just come hang out, go to a storytime, see Councilmember Beck there quite a bit with her grandkids, and it's just a great place to be. So a couple of things that we want to highlight this evening, September, it feels like every month, day, week, whatever, has its own something. Well, believe it or not, September is National Library Card Sign-Up Month. I know you all, you know, celebrate your own way, which is great. We've got a few ways that we're helping our patrons and non-patrons celebrate this month. So if you don't have a library card, you can sign up, we'll give you a free library bag, and we'll do some prize drawings at the end of the month. If you already have a library card, well, maybe you lost your card, but you're still using it, we'll come in, we'll replace it for free. Typically, we charge a nominal fee to replace cards. We're doing a little promo online. If you'll take a picture of yourself traveling out with the family, take a picture of you with your card somewhere, we'll enter all of those entries into a drawing at the end of the month, just to help promote library usership within our community. We're also working with maybe users that haven't been to the library for a while, for whatever reason, and we're doing some specialized campaigns to those inactive users to try and encourage them to come back this month and kind of rekindle that use of the library. I put a Q. R. code up there, so patrons or residents can scan that, that code and go directly to our signup form online. Something that we're really excited about that we're launching this week, we call it our Memory Lab, and shout out and thanks to Councilman Euler, who helped give us some guidance and direction as to how to create this. But we've created some workstations upstairs on our second floor where patrons who maybe have old media formats that would like to get them digitized into a format that is more preservable, they can bring them in. It could be old VHS tapes, we've got some old camcorders, you can bring in your camcorder tapes, we've got photo scanners, negative scanners, cassette players, we've got our sound booth. These devices called Clear Clicks, they essentially will convert the video or audio, just much like what our computers would do here, but you could do it from the comfort of your home, own home. So if you don't want to sit at the library and watch, you know, Carden Family Christmas 2001 at the library, you want to do it at home, you can check out that device and convert your media at home. I know I've got a stack of photos from my childhood that I'm excited to bring in and get digitized. And so we're really excited about this. There are a couple of other libraries in the community. Provo has one, Salem has something similar that we feel like will help members of our community that have this, these media formats that they want to preserve long-term, a way to do that. And thanks to the Institute of Museum and Library Services that provided the grant that funded this project for us, and that was administered through the Utah State Library. So big thanks to them for helping make this project available for residents in our community. Am I a thing? My bases are right on there. I'm surprised I, this wasn't all prefaced with Scott the librarian. Anyways, those Clear Clicks, those devices that can check out, we've put those in our Library of Things, which is a collection that we've been growing over the last few years of things that patrons maybe wouldn't traditionally think would be available at the library. And so some of the things that we have in this collection that are available to our, all of. that are available to all of our patrons, we just recently added some digital radon scanners and sensors, so that you can put that in your home, do a long-term or short-term radon test at your home. We've got blood pressure kits that also have some pulse oximeters and other things. Those Clear Click devices, we have a video projector and a screen. If you want to do a backyard movie, come check out the projector, set it up in your backyard. Tony boxes, my kids love them. It's that in the top right corner for long car rides. It's a little speaker box that have these little figures that you put on top. It'll play a song, a story related to that specific character. So it's a great alternative to maybe screen time when you're on a road trip. We've got some telescopes, our early literacy and steam backpacks. And then we've got CD, DVD, and Blu-ray players for individuals that maybe want to check out a DVD, but I don't have a Blu-ray player plugged in my house, but we'll check out a player from the library and you're on the route. So some kind of unique things that we have offered here at the library. One last thing that I want to talk about this evening is a really cool project that I haven't found in any other library, at least here locally. We call it our Remembrance Fund. So let's say you have a family member or a friend who passes away, you donate flowers and flowers die in a couple days, and that's the end of the flowers. Well, we have at the library our Remembrance Fund, which is a way that you can donate in memory of someone. And you can provide us some recommendations. So maybe your loved one was a big BYU football fan, or they loved American history, or religious materials, whatever it may be, you can make a donation to the library in their name. With those recommendations, we'll go out and buy something that would fit within our collection development policy, add it to the collection, throw a label inside the front of the book that indicates this was donated on behalf of this individual. And then that book lasts longer than the flowers ever would. And we'll send a card to the receiving family to say, "By the way, this book was purchased in memory of your loved one. It's available at the Spanish Fork Library." And in time, you know, it doesn't happen often, but over time, if those items get withdrawn from our collection, we've got contact information that we can reach out to the family and say, "Hey, this is donated for your family member. If you want it, you can have it." But it's a great way for people to donate and memorialize someone that has passed away. Historically, you've got to come into the library to make these donations. And we've got some stalwarts that we see on a regular basis donating on behalf of their friends and family. We're just finalizing, tying up some of the loose ends on making this donation process available online. So if you want to donate to the library, you can do so online and save yourself a trip here, if that's convenient. I know we have at least, there's at least one Parks and Rec Department employee that is here on a regular basis, but I think this will be very helpful for them, as well as others within the community. So it's just a great tool, great thing that we offer that, again, I don't think is found in many other libraries, at least any here locally. So those are just a couple of updates that we have going on at the library over the next little bit. So would entertain any questions you guys might have or comments.
Awesome.
Love it, yeah.
One word, awesome. Yeah, you guys are doing great.
Perfect. Thank you very much for your time, Council and Mayor.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate the update. Very is cool.
Yep.
Okay, takes us to consent items. There's three items on the consent item agenda. If there's any questions about that, please let us know. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
I move to approve the consent items?
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Took, second by Councilwoman Beck. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Consent items are approved. Two public hearings tonight, both annexations, I think in the same general area, if I'm not mistaken, right, Brandon?
Correct.
Item A, ordinance for the Mapleview Farms annexation.
Yeah, I'll talk generally to both of them, since they are adjacent, and at one time they were considered together. The update, since you last looked at this in July, it's gone through the public noticing process. So tonight is the public hearings with the action to accept these two annexations combined. We're looking at roughly just over 101 acres. We'll give Jack a second.
Do you have a presentation for you?
It's from Ian.
I have the staff report.
Sorry about that. So the north portion, north of 700 South, is just under 40 acres. The south portion, the Stewart Farm portion, is just over 62 acres. Both property owners are here tonight that own a majority of each section. There are other properties that are involved. All of them have expressed interest in being part of the annexation. So this one that you're looking at here, this is the Mapleview Farms, the north portion. At this time, we do not have development plans for either annexation area, and so the recommendation is to annex both areas in with the rural residential zoning designation. What's important is this will fill an island that's on the east bench. And this is currently in the general plan for estate density residential, so we do anticipate seeing development proposals soon. That would utilize the R-115 zoning district, excuse me. Let's go to the next slide. So this is showing what's currently in the city and what's out. Once again, Mapleview Farms is the north. Let's go to the next slide. This is the general plan designation. If we can jump real fast to the next, we'll skip over this real fast. This is the south portion, the Stewart Farm annexation. Goes from 3,400 East to the west, which includes the residential facility that's currently in Utah County. Let's go to the next. So if you go back one slide, excuse me, you can see that these two annexations together would fill that island. Let's go back a couple slides. We do have motions set up for you, both relatively the same, finding that it's going to eliminate an island of unincorporated Utah County. Both annexations were qualified to use the resolution route via the petition route. It was just a little bit quicker in this case to do the resolution route with two separate annexations. For the Stewart Farm, the southern portion, we have been providing water services to the residential facility for over a year. To the north annexation, we have some farming properties, buildings, as well as a few residences, but we haven't been providing facilities there. But they will have that option soon. And then both of these areas are within our current annexation policy boundary, as well as our growth management boundary, which basically indicates we do have utilities available to serve these properties. And so once again, we do have the staff recommendation here for the Mapleview Farms. And then we would have a separate recommendation for you on Mapleview. And then, as noted on the agenda, public hearings for both items, please. Any questions for staff?
Questions for Brandon before we go into public hearing?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Appreciate that.
As I mentioned, we do have John Stewart and Doug Nielsen here, if you have any questions of the applicants.
The applicant like to speak at all before we go into public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, questions?
Okay. Let's see if we do from public hearing, and then we'll come to you if we do. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing for item A.
I move that we go into public hearing?
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Euler, second by Councilman Carden. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
We're in public hearing for item A. Anybody want to speak to the ordinance for the Mapleview Farms annexation? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Euler.
Second.
Second by Councilman Took. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Can we go into public hearing for the next one and see before we... If you're rolling your eyes, we'll do it the regular way.
If you can follow that in the minutes, have the two public hearings, then have the two motions. All right. As long as she keeps it clear, yeah.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing for item B.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Carden, second by Councilwoman Beck. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Anybody here to speak for the Stewart Farms annexation public hearing? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall.
Second.
Second by Councilman Euler. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Okay. Public hearings, discussions back up here. Any questions, Council?
Brandon, just one quick question. From what you said, the utilities are there and available for these whenever they decide to do those developments. Right now, right in the area, or the general plan, it's R-115. Obviously, they'd have to go through a rezoning process, whatever that looks like, and then anything else. But utilities are there and available, especially because there's a lot of developments already happening on that southeast corridor.
Correct. We do have a sewer line that, or not sewer line, a water line that runs through 700 South. And then to the east, we've had a number of different developments approved recently on 3,400 East, starting with Quiet Valley, the Fieldstone Development, Whispering-
Pines.
Whispering Pines? I can't remember on losing. And then there's also Condor Heights, and there's another one sandwiched in between those, The Orchard. Thank you. And so between the development on 700 South and 3,400 East, we do have utilities that are available. Obviously, with any development, there are some improvements, potentially some offsites to make those connections.
For sure.
But we do have it in a position where it can be orderly and efficient.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for Brandon or the staff or the applicants that are here tonight?
I think there's been a lot of work put into getting this happen. We talked about this island a long time ago, and so it's good to see this kind of come to fruition and to be taken care of.
Looks like from the map, this kind of gets us all the way up to our border with our friends in Mapleton and takes care of at least the east side of our town as far as it can grow, one of the last pieces. So we appreciate you going through that process.
Yep. Thanks for the applicant. Right, this is third time they've been here?
Yeah.
Thank you for coming back. Yep, appreciate it. We got there, I think. Thanks for the patience. It's a better, it's a better application now than it was three times ago, but we appreciate your working with us. Mayor, I would say that last time we had an annexation that came in as RR, I had a bunch of questions and comments and concerns about not knowing the zone prior to the annexation. Just to make sure that I'm not completely inconsistent, because this is coming in the same way, and I don't have the same concerns. It's a different area, different context. General plan is consistent with what it's been for a very long time. Their property, the developments, like you just mentioned, Brandon, on either side, that it'll be consistent with. So the expectation is, we can see, last time, you know, it wasn't that, right? It was brand-new, hard to understand what might come in as a zone after the annexation. So in this case, I'm very comfortable with annexing while sticking with RR and then have the conversation about the legislative decision in the next few months. So thank you for your time and effort. Appreciate that.
We'll see you again.
Yes, yep, please.
I'd like to make a comment when you're finished.
Okay, all right, okay.
Don't jeopardize the yes yet.
That's probably a good idea. We've been through this before. We've got to do these separate. I'd entertain a motion for item A.
I move to approve the proposed ordinance for the Mapleview Farms annexation based on the following findings: that annexing this property would contribute towards the elimination of an island of unincorporated Utah County; that the proposed annexation qualifies for annexation approval by resolution; and that the subject property is located within the city's annexation policy boundary and growth management boundary.
Motion made by Councilman Euler.
Second.
Second by Councilman Marshall. Roll call vote here. Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
And Councilman Took.
Yes.
Item A is approved. We'll go to item B now. If there's any questions for item B, let's state them. If not, I'd entertain a motion for item B.
I move to approve the proposed ordinance for Stewart Farms annexation based on the findings listed in the staff report.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Carden, second by Councilwoman Beck. A roll call vote here. Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Item B is approved as well. Yes, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Douglas Nielsen, and I represent the Mapleview Farm annexation. And I just wanted to say, there were some complications in this annexation, having to do with utilities, involvement of the school, and everybody that I worked with here at the city have just been top-notch and professional. Mr. Pikel, Mr. Perrins, Mr. Euler, pardon me, Dave Anderson, he used to be a Dave Euler person, remember that? I worked with him years ago.
He's pretty good. His son is less than stellar, but Dave Euler's pretty good.
Is David your brother? Dave your brother?
His father.
Oh, he's your father? Well, you've followed in his footsteps. That's great. Is he still around, retired?
Yeah, retired.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Enjoying life.
Quite a few years. And Brandon, and Ian, and who else, who I missed. But anyway, it's been a pleasure to work with these professionals and getting this thing through and taking care of them. We're proposing an R-15 zone with average 15,000 square foot, single-family residences on this property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you pointing that out, that these reports that make it to us when it finally gets to an approval timeframe have a lot of work in it, and it comes from professionals at the city level writing that up. So appreciate you confirming those facts of their professionalism and what they do. Okay, that takes us to item 10. On our agenda, adjourn to closed meeting if needed. Do we need a closed session tonight? Yes, we do.
Yes, if we could for land transactions.
I'd entertain a motion if nothing else needs to come before this body.
I move to adjourn to closed meeting to discuss strategy sessions, to discuss purchase, exchange, and lease of real property as provided by the Utah, annotated 52-4-205 in the Explorer Room.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Second by Councilman Took. A roll call vote. Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yep.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
We're adjourned to closed session. Thank you, everyone, for coming.